Yes, she is. She is there right now.
We'll have to tease her, she's just trying to get out of the meeting. Although she'd probably rather be here.
And Clerk Rowe will not be in attendance either this evening. So the first item on the agenda is a presentation of Fair Housing Study and Affirmatively Furthering Fair Housing. And we have Teresa Gelati and Andrea Plevek from the county. And they're going to do a brief presentation on what was in the board package.
Thank you. Well, hello. This is a very sensitive mic. I feel like I could probably just talk to you all without it. I'm Andrea Plevek. I haven't had the chance to meet all of you. Some of you I know well and have worked together for a long time. I'm the Director of the Office of Community and Economic Development. I've been in this role for about a year, a little over a year now. So I have the opportunity of continuing some of the great work that this department has been a part of in partnership with communities like the township, like the Housing Affordability and Economic Equity Study that our department published back in 2015. I know this board is familiar with that. Ypsilanti Township has been one of our core partners in advancing the priorities and goals adopted out of that work. So we're here tonight in part to provide a brief update on the progress made to date. I did hear brief in Brenda's description of our presentation, so we really are going to try and move through a lot of content really quickly. The second half of the presentation, we're going to be talking about a more recent effort required of our office by the Department of Housing and Urban Development as one of the recipients of federal funds called the Affirmatively Furthering Fair Housing Study and Resulting Plan. I am not the content expert on that, my colleague Teresa Gelati is, so I'm going to let her tell you as much as we can squeeze into our brief time today. But essentially HUD put a rule into effect a few years ago that has impacted the way that communities like ours need to do our planning for federal funds, community development block grant, home funds, emergency solutions grants funds, that takes into account the Fair Housing Act and how communities need to be thinking about housing affordability, access to housing, and a host of other access to opportunity indicators. So we have lots of information and a lot of data. We will give you an overview of that again tonight. It's a very dense set of materials. And we'll provide you, of course, access to all the information online. And we would be happy to come back if there are additional questions or pieces we can't get to tonight. And so with that, I will turn it over to Teresa, and we will both be here to answer questions when she's done.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for having us. We'll just jump right in. So back in 2015, you were one of a number of communities, six total, that adopted the Housing Affordability and Economic Equity Study. And just sort of high level, I know a lot of you are familiar, we talked about there being two distinct markets on the west side, in particular the Ann Arbor area, where we have high rents, high incomes, high amenities, you know, a very established Ann Arbor Public School district that's well thought of. And on the east side broadly, we have lower, much lower incomes, some lower rents, and we're working on our amenities and picking them up, but we definitely have a smaller tech space to work from as well. So we have sort of this housing market imbalance. And one of the main goals of the study is to balance it out. So in the next slide, where we're trying to get to is balancing this out so that we can have sort of similar sort of property values, so we can have similar opportunities for affordable housing throughout the county and that sort of access that provides. And to create that balance, what's proposed in that study, our ultimate goals are to add a large number of affordable housing units in Ann Arbor and Pittsfield over the next 20 years. That's like 2,797 in the city of Ann Arbor, 342 in Pittsfield. And then on the east side, grow through our populations, college-educated households. And so we're talking about adding those college-educated households in the city of Ypsilanti and Ypsilanti Township. So that's kind of the shift that we're ultimately trying to achieve. Thank you. So since then, you know, we broke it down to what the annual look would be, 140 units of affordable housing a year in Ann Arbor, 17 a year in Pittsfield, 16, growing up those 60 college-educated households in city of Ypsilanti, 140 a year in Ypsie Township. And we're trying to, through an affordable housing leadership team, which both Brenda and Karen sit on with the other members of this group, which includes city of Ypsie, Pittsfield Township, Yps...you're already Ypsie Township, Ann Arbor, Ann Arbor DDA, and Washtenaw County, sort of come up with annual goals to sort of chip away at that. Because this is a 20-year project, and so we need to be constantly working on it to sort of see those changes happen. So in the next slide, we're going to kind of run through sort of what we did to get started and where we're going. So we finished the study, it got adopted, we convened this leadership team, and we started moving. So in the next slide, I'm going to kind of go through each of the jurisdictions and sort of what progress we're making or not making. So Ann Arbor has set that 140 new affordable units a year goal. These are non-student affordable housing units, up to 60% of the area median income. They added two in 2015, 16 in 2016. But what they've really been trying to do is try to remove some of those barriers that the barriers to basically adding affordable housing. Some of it is financing, so that they've been contributing to the Ann Arbor Housing Commission. They're committing half of the proceeds of the sale of the Library Lane Lot, which is expected to be about $5 million to the Ann Arbor Trust Fund, Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And they're trying to change, look at their zoning. They added last year changes to their zoning ordinance to allow for accessory dwelling units, sort of those mother-in-law suites that we hear about as one way. And they're starting to look at transient-oriented development and affordable housing zoning changes for 2017. So they're looking at ways to sort of open it up so that they can add more of those affordable housing units. The next one is Pittsfield Township. So a little bit more modest of a goal of adding 17 affordable housing units a year. Unfortunately, right now, we haven't added any new since we started the study. But what they have been doing is some of that master planning and zoning changes. So in particular, in the Packard Carpenter Corridor, they've done a charrette and actually gone through master planning and zoning changes that's going to open up additional housing options. So it's not just single families, so there's the ability to do apartments or mixed-use development. So it's trying to make that a little bit more flexible to try and attract more housing. In the city of Ypsilanti, the goal is to add 69, or grow 69, college-educated households a year. We've been tracking that through a data set, and they went down 87 in 2016. And one of the things that we think's a factor there is because Eastern Michigan University is in the city limits, that's going to fluctuate a lot up and down because you have so many people in school that are living in the area. So it's going to impact that number. So we'll see how that plays out. But they've been working hard. Ypsilanti Housing Commission will be finishing rehabbing and redeveloping all of their public housing by the end of this year. And I know a lot of you are familiar with that. Park Ridge Homes, Hamilton Crossing was the first, but everything else, whether it's Bell Kramer or Town or all those units have been redone. So that's been a huge impact. And they're trying to build on that by adding a neighborhood enterprise zone on the south side to encourage infill development and additions within the neighborhoods surrounding those properties. They also put out a successful request for proposals to do development for for-sale housing, where the former Boys and Girls Club was on Park Street. They've selected a developer, and I think that's supposed to be moving forward with a purchase agreement in the next month or two. And then you all, Ypsie Township. So that's similar goal of growing 140 college-educated households a year. And in 2016, we're showing an increase of 75, which is great. You guys have expanded your rental inspection program to cover all rental properties, right? Single-family homes, multifamily, everything, which is great. And expanding that partnership with Habitat for Humanity. So not just West Willow and Galt Village, but now moving into Sugar Brook. And it's been super successful, continuing that whole partnership has been excellent for neighborhood stabilization, increasing those property values, homeownership. And then continuing working with developers on market rate housing, but also including some lower income-for-sale properties with that Habitat partnership. And the recent request for RFQ, I believe, for development for the township-owned property. So lots of great stuff going on here. On the county side, we're trying to amplify some of those local efforts. So we're looking at developing a process to evaluate all county investments through an equity lens. We're looking at that for 2018. We're advocating for legislative changes to allow local units some flexibility around zoning in particular, and incentives to encourage affordable housing, only if the local unit chooses to. Right now, the Rent Control Act is very restrictive on what we can and can't do. And then the Platt Road development between Packard and Washtenaw, a developer has been selected. It's going to include 50 affordable housing units out of about a total of 150 in that whole development.
Great. Not exactly what we wanted.
We were hoping for more. But we're happy to have some. And in this, the good thing about those 50 units is that 25 to 30 of them will be for households that are up to 30% of area median income at the most at-risk population. So that's one good thing, although of course, we would have liked to have more. But so that's the...
May I ask, the money, did they sell their property yet?
Not yet. So they selected the developer, that Thrive Collaborative, that's what it is, called Veridian at County Farm Park. And so they're in negotiations now, hope to have the purchase agreement, but the actual transaction wouldn't happen until, like, the money wouldn't get paid out until they finish going through zoning and building and all those approvals. So it'll probably be a year or two out before that comes downstream. Okay, so that was kind of the summary of where we are. And we're going to be working on a new work plan for 2018 and moving forward on what other pieces of implementation we want to do to achieve those goals. But now I want to shift into the assessment of fair housing, what Andrea was talking about, the effort that we did this summer. It builds on a lot of those pieces that we talked about in the Housing Affordability Study. This summer, we did a lot of information gathering, data analysis, and community engagement, and then actually did the drafting in August and September. And now we're in the implementation phase. This plan, which is enormous, it's like 260 pages, so get ready to read it. What we're trying to do is achieve a lot of these goals in a five-year period. And the whole part of this process is that we're supposed to look at the historic legacies of segregation and exclusion and how they're impacting our neighborhoods today. We're not going to unpack all of that in just five years, but what we want to do is, again, have achievable goals that are going to be moving us forward, trying to increase opportunity in particular for all of our families in the county, actually. So some of the things that we did this summer, and you guys were a great help, actually, both Brenda and Karen and Monica were involved in some of the focus groups and the neighborhood meetings and the survey distribution. So we worked with some of the HUD data, but we tried to supplement it with a series of focus groups. We had almost 800 surveys collected, which was excellent. And then we added some local data, including some neighborhood profiles. We did some for West Willow, we did some for...Karen kept asking for more. I think we did like four or five for Ypsie Township. So you guys got the most. As you can imagine, she was on it. So we have a whole series for Ypsie Township. And what they do is document changes in population, but on the back, you'll see changes in property values over the course of like, I think, a 12-year period, and also whether it's owner-occupied and rental. So we're trying to track those changes, and we'll be able to update those over time. So we're kind of benchmarking it now, can see and look how we did in a couple of years. All right? So I mentioned about 800 surveys, which was great. And in our focus groups, we hit West Willow neighborhood in Ypsie Township. We did the south side in the city of Ypsie. And we did some that were sort of, not just neighborhood-focused, but like the Ann Arbor Center for Independent Living, focusing on people with disabilities, and the Offenders' Success Program, which is a prisoner reentry program. So we wanted to hit some specific populations as well. So one of the major things HUD wanted to focus on with this idea of thinking about the history of segregation and its impact is areas that are racially and ethnically concentrated, areas of poverty. And this is a HUD term, but basically it means that this is a census tract that disproportionately includes non-white households living in poverty. There were two in the entire county. So one is the south side, sort of the historic African-American neighborhood. But the second was La Forge, which is split between the city of Ypsie and Ypsie Township, right down the line, which we were a little bit surprised, but we know that is mostly multifamily apartments and that it is got some subsidized housing, not many services, but a lot of need in a lot of families. What we tried to do on the next slide is, well, that was sort of a look at sort of where traditionally the African-American population is and showing the concentration in 1960 on the south side is still playing out, for example. And the next one, we tried to look at some of the demographics for La Forge. So what are we talking about? I highlighted a few. So again, a high African-American population in this case, low median household income, high unemployment, high child poverty, low educational attainment. So definitely a population that needs more services, needs more investment. And so that's one of the things that we are sort of challenged with in this project is for those two neighborhoods, is figuring out how we can use our existing funding and sort of find ways to invest well to benefit these families and these communities. We'll talk about that in a minute. In addition to that racially and ethnically concentrated area of poverty, the other big focus of the whole process is trying to think about how we achieve access to opportunity for every neighborhood in the county. And we kind of think about it as a system, right? So it's housing for sure, but it's where your kids go to school, what school districts they're in. It's education, it's where you're working and employment, and how you get there through transportation. And then kind of tying it all together is fair housing, like, are there things above and beyond that may be limiting you to where you can be and where you want to live? So, or work, for that matter. So those are all kind of tied together, and I'm going to give you a couple of examples of each. So in the affordable housing category, we did take a lot of the recommendations from the study and incorporate them in the plan. And a couple of things that sort of reinforced that is when we did the survey, the vast majority said that one of the biggest reasons when deciding where to live is affordability. And it goes up to 60% if I'm just looking at the 48197 and 48198 ZIP codes, the results from there. So that's the number-one reason about how people decide where to live. It really impacts where you can choose to live. So 52% of the respondents to the survey said that housing affordability in their neighborhood was fair or poor. And when asked if overall housing costs have changed during the past three years, 68% of survey respondents noted that housing costs are increasing. And we were hearing that across the board. So not just in Ann Arbor, we were hearing it in Ypsie and Ypsie Township that that is going up. It's starting to happen everywhere, spilling over. So one of the things about having sort of more affordable housing is where you can use vouchers. And we've talked about this a lot, but this is a map with HUD data related to where vouchers are utilized in the county. Those are all census tracts. But if you can sort of see Ypsie, Ypsie Township, that the higher utilization is definitely on the east side. And, sorry that it's cut off, it's actually 50% of all rentals in West Willow use vouchers. One thing that we learned that was surprising, we knew it was high, we didn't know it was that high. But the other thing that we learned is that the benefit, why people choose it also, is because it's one of the few places you can rent a whole house with a voucher. And so in some cases, if you want a two-bedroom or a small three-bedroom, you can go to West Willow, have a house and a yard. You can't get that many other places in the county. So there is actually an attraction, it's not just the landlord's benefiting, it's this funky combo of both, which I thought was really interesting. But we learned that one from the Ann Arbor Housing Commission and their work with the different folks using vouchers.
Do you think it's also like the inequity in the rental market? So we qualify because of Ann Arbor's income rate that's set by HUD, the voucher amount is set by HUD, is that not correct?
It is.
Based on the whole county?
Right.
So you can rent, if there is an apartment in Ann Arbor, for the same amount, you can get a house somewhere else. But there aren't no other places in Ann Arbor right now, are there? My understanding, for affordable...
For using. There are some, but not nearly as much. Generally, everything is much more expensive in Ann Arbor, Pittsfield, so any rental is generally more. But there are some people that are willing to take vouchers, but it's not as many as we'd like. That's why we want to add more committed affordable units, so people could either pay regular rent or use a voucher in Ann Arbor. That's one of the reasons we're trying to shift and get more units there, for that very reason.
Right, because, yeah.
Yeah, because it's not as available, you're right.
So investors were choosing houses here because you could get the highest amount of rent, even though the market rate in 48197 and 48198 might be 750, 800 for a house. They're getting 1,200 for a voucher.
Right, they're getting more.
So, I mean, right...
There's that as well, yeah. So it's kind of a, it's people wanting to live there because they get more for their voucher, and the landlords knowing that they can get more rent. Yeah, it's the combo, I agree.
I don't think there's any availability.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a couple of questions, especially about the 50%, because I know at one point in time, it was actually higher than this, it was actually 60%. So, you know, it appears it has went down, at least maybe, I'm assuming that has to do with Habitat, maybe some of the homeownership that's coming through Habitat, hopefully, at least putting a dent in it. But then the second question I had is, I would be very interested in these numbers between 2008 and 2013. And particularly, how much did the rental units increase or housing increase within, not just West Willow, but I also would be interested in Galt Village, it looked like it's here, and the other communities where the average is over 19% between 2008 and 2013? Because it was, I'll be honest, it was a lot of chatter that it may have been a lot of speculative buying, too.
So that's, you just tapped into those neighborhood profiles. So half of the profile documents, the first year we have is 2005, and then the most recent is 2017. And we track homeownership and rentals in those given neighborhoods between those two periods. So Galt Village is in there, we did Sugar Brook, we did West Willow, we did kind of Clark Road Homes area, so I'm missing maybe one, but so we have a bunch of those. So I'll make sure I send you guys a follow-up email with links to those, but they're on our AFA page, which I'll send you, I'll show you the link here in a second. But we have all that data, so I'm glad you asked for those specifically. We hit the right ones. Okay, good. So this slide is also showing another thing that's kind of contributing to pressure and sort of concentrating sort of low-income households, is where we've placed our committed affordable units. These are the ones that you are required to have a certain income, and you can't charge over a certain percentage of rent to try and maintain affordability. But you're seeing a large concentration on the east side. And actually, if you combine the city of Ypsie and Ypsie Township, even though you have about 20% of the population in the county, you have almost 50% of all the committed affordable units in the county. I mean, we need more overall, but we definitely need better distribution. That's kind of the takeaway there. Thanks. So let's switch to employment. So this map is sort of trying to illustrate the changes between 2003 and 2013 in where employment is in a county. And so as you can see, and probably not news to you, there's a overall loss of jobs in that period from the east side, about 10,000. And then it gains a lot in Ann Arbor environs, almost a little bit more than 10,000, 11,000 in that same time period. So we're seeing that shift, and it's that change from manufacturing over into both high-tech and service. So I always want to put that caveat in, because there are some great jobs out there, but then there are some sort of lower-range jobs in the service industries that don't have quite the economic mobility that we used to have for people with similar educations in the manufacturing industry. So it's a shift overall in the economy. And the next slide, we just want to sort of talk about where you can get employment, right? So we have these great clusters, this is a SEMCOG map that came out this year, great clusters in Ann Arbor and Ypsie with Eastern and things along in Ypsie Township as well. Hopefully, that's going to blow up even more with ACM. But then all these job centers to the east, right? So there's lots of employment opportunities as well. Which brings us to our next point, which is access to transportation. You're good. So one thing that we talk about is how can you get to where you need to go? So there was a 2015 Michigan Works survey of job seekers, where we learned that the number-one issue for finding and maintaining a job was access to a vehicle or reliable transportation. More than education, being able to get there and get there every day and have that reliable transportation was the number-one reason. And so obviously, if you don't have access to a vehicle, or if you can't pay for repairs, that's going to impact how well you can keep that job. If we talk about bus transportation, the next slide, AATA has greatly expanded their service. It's been amazing to have the new services, the new routes, the changes. But if we're thinking about one of the job centers being going west to U of M Hospital, for example, you know, in the La Forge area, that could be anywhere between 48 to 57 minutes one way, right? The south side's almost an hour, West Willow is a minimum of an hour one way. And we know sometimes you need to make stops, sometimes you miss a connection. You know, this is a challenge still, and even though it's greatly improved, there's more need to connect to that job market to the west. And we completely lack a job connection to the east. We don't have transit to any of those job centers going east. So that's a missed opportunity, or, you know, an opportunity that maybe will be coming up if, I don't know if it's RTA, I don't know if it's the train, or whatever options we can talk about, or other transportation options coming up, but we need to find other ways to link people to those jobs. So one other piece of this, in addition to sort of just being able to get to the job centers, came from the disability community, who really wanted to comment on the linkages once you get off the bus, once you park your car. We heard a story of a woman who could see the bus stop across the street on a sidewalk, but there were no curb cuts for her to go, so she had to go down a block and a half and come around just to get to the bus stop that she could clearly see from her front window. So as we think about transportation and making those linkages, we got to make sure it's all the way down to the point where a person who is in a wheelchair or some other sort of scooter or something can get there where they need to go to access that bus, that car, what have you. And the next one is education. So I think a lot of you are pretty familiar with this, but we wanted to make sure folks were aware, if we look at all of the children living in poverty by school districts, we see, you know, it's mostly in the urbanized area, but by far and large, it's over in the Ypsilanti Township area, most impacting Ypsilanti Community Schools, that school district. And the next slide, we'll see that that corresponds pretty clearly with the African-American population. So children in poverty, African-American population, and sort of some of the lower-performing school districts, which we'll see on the next slide, which is showing, yes, there it is, the school rankings from 2015, 2016. The blue is highest performing in the state, and the red is the lowest performing in the state. There is some mix in there. We are seeing a little green, orange, blue in both Ypsie Community Schools, Lincoln Community Schools. But obviously, those sorts of, those three maps just line right up, right? Children living in poverty, African-American neighborhoods, and performing schools. So where we have the greatest need, often we're not providing the greatest resources. Another thing that came up as part of that kind of conversation was at the Park Ridge Focus Group, there was a lot of conversation about, in particular with Ypsie Community Schools, the lack of people of color as teachers, as other professionals in schools, principals, superintendents, that there was just, there was not enough representation, and that it was very important if you're going to have a school district that is a minority-majority population, that that's reflected in the people who are working there. So now we're on to fair housing. And in the next slide, you know, I think you're all familiar, most people are, with sort of the protected classes through state and federal legislation. And so there's no discrimination is allowed for any of these classes. And in the next slide, we'll find that for all the fair housing cases filed with HUD in Washtenaw County, that the top two by far are race and disability, where we've had the most complaints and filings throughout the county. On the next slide, you'll see, oh, yes.
Brenda, Madam Chair. Hi. Okay. I had a question, because when I saw this chart, I noticed it was a quick jump from 2015 to 2016 in regards to familial status. I'm pronouncing that correctly. What does that mean? I just wanted to...
Familiar status?
Yeah.
It's basically whether or not you have children. So people have been discriminated against. Some people don't want to rent to families with children. They're like, you know, a perception that it will wear down the unit more, or be too loud, or, I don't know, insert whatever you might put in there, but yes.
Okay. That was a scary smell there, thank you.
Yeah. So in the next one, we got a similar, oh, I'm sorry. There you go. So we got a similar response in the survey when we asked the question about how people, if they were treated differently, maybe when they're looking for a house or getting an apartment. And the biggest issue was race and ethnicity. Then it was age, which is slightly different, and then disability is the next. So that was kind of affirming, but also adding age, and there is a potential discriminatory issue that can happen. We heard really strongly from the Center for Independent Living that people with disabilities in ways that you wouldn't think of were being sort of pushed out of different rental apartment units. And I think overall, on this issue, a lot of people don't know when they're being discriminated against. In our focus groups, we had to really kind of push people to say, well, have you, if you are African-American, have you had a white friend go to the same place and see more units? Or get a different rate that might be lower, or in any way be treated differently? And sort of we gave a few examples, and they started spilling out more and more. So I think in some ways, there's a big opportunity for education, so people understand it, because you sort of rule it out. You don't want to think, oh, that's happening to me. You want to think the best of people. So sometimes it takes a little bit more education for people to realize that that might be happening, and to report it to the Fair Housing Center as well. So that's a lot of information. Thanks for sticking out with me. As we went through the process of developing goals, we came up with 10 broad goals and[1797.76] through the process of developing goals, we came up with 10 broad goals, and under a number of strategies. I'm not going to go through all of them tonight, it's a lot. But what we wanted to do is kind of focus on ones that would directly impact Ipsy Township. So Andrea's kindly passing out the full set of goals, but I'm going to run you through three of them. So, the first one is about that racially and ethnically concentrated areas of poverty. Because HUD really wants us to focus on it, what Urban County decided to do is to commit any community development block grant program income, so money that comes back in. So say, you had a Habitat house, and you, we put a certain amount of money into it, and you sold that house, and that money comes back to us, for example. It would go back into program income. So we're saying any money that would come back, it's usually rehab houses, if someone got a new roof and there was a lien, and then they sold the house, that money comes back to us. Any of that money that comes back, we want to invest in those neighborhoods that need the most help. And so some potential ways that we can do so is through the acquisition, development, resale process that you do with Habitat all the time, to increase the number of owner-occupied homes, down payment assistance to that same end of trying to get more owner occupants, potentially park improvements or other community infrastructure projects, pedestrian improvements, streetlights, street trees, or even things like exterior home improvements, like fixing fences, getting rid of trees that are about to fall down, just some sprucing off that needs to happen as well. So that's one of our strategies, is that additional investment. And then the next one is to try and look at increasing employment opportunities. And this would be more broad to a lot of the neighborhoods that have high unemployment. So this wouldn't just be us, it would be requiring partnering with a lot of local agencies. One, to identify the skills gap in the labor market's hiring pipeline, because we hear that there are so many jobs that are unfilled, and then we've got neighborhoods with so many people who need jobs. So let's figure out what's missing, especially around the skills, try and help people, and then try to connect them into those job markets. And specifically, in the next one, we would love to figure out a couple pilot programs where we can set up the training that would be needed, mentoring programs, and then an end job at the end of it. So just a clear pipeline in a few different fields, targeting those neighborhoods that are high employment. So those are things that we want to work on in the next few years. It's not going to happen right away, but it's something we feel like we can start making progress for. And when we do, we're going to need some help from you to sort of connect to those neighborhoods that most need it.
Madam Chair.
I had a question in regards, I don't know...
Can you go back one second?
Sorry, I don't know if discussions have started, or will be in the future, in regards to the autonomous training program that they are having at Washtenaw Community College, ethnic certificate, and also a social degree program, and trying to, you know, use that as a possible funnel for some jobs.
We haven't started having those, we haven't started any of these, but I think that's one that could definitely be one that we tried to look at and see if we can create a pilot to, write to it, especially since it's right there. It's great, thanks. The next one, thank you, is around that fair housing education piece. And one of the things that we want to do is use Urban County to help disperse information to residents, to make sure that people, even if they suspect that maybe something felt uncomfortable, that they call the Fair Housing Center and see if someone can go out and be a tester, and see if there was an issue there. And we also need to volunteer those testers, and that's where, you know, if you have a Hispanic couple that was denied, you would send out maybe a white couple or African-American couple, and see if they're all treated the same, with the same property manager, or that sort of thing, and that's how you sort of build your case. All right, and we'll go to the last one. That is kind of getting through it all as fast as I can. I really want to connect you to this website, that's where those neighborhood profiles are. The survey results are all there, if you want to dig into that some more. Lots of information, a little bit overwhelming, but if, like I said, I'll send links specifically to the Ipsy Township profiles to you tomorrow.
Are there any other questions?
Yes.
I just want to say thank you for coming and giving this presentation, because it's one thing to be able to read it, and it's another thing to hear you kind of go more in depth, and just appreciate it. And who, in 2015, when this was first done, who came up with the idea to, that this was an issue, or something that needed to be worked on in the county?
Wow, that's a big question.
I wasn't at the county.
You know, our department, the sort of spirit with which our department was created was very much focused on access to opportunity as sort of a core tenet. We were created from a county-departmental merger in 2012, and our sort of focus is, how do we, you know, impact our community in positive ways as it relates to access to opportunity? So housing, particularly as the entity that is the recipient of our federal housing dollars, is core among those issues. We can thank predecessors that are no longer with our department for the specific link to the consultants we worked with, the CCB folks on that study in 2015, but it lines up with work that we've been doing over a long period of time, and with some of the same people at your table, actually, so.
All right, thank you.
Other comments or questions? I just, I think part of the goals and strategies should include the county, like...
Oh, yeah, they do.
I don't know, is that mentioned?
Yeah, so I just wanted to highlight the ones that had like direct impact on Ipsy Township, but there are, there are many, many more in that handout, yes.
Well, because the county, the equity lens, but there's some statement, don't let your zip code define what...
Your future.
I can't remember what it was.
Your future, absolutely. So, you know, we're talking, in this presentation, we sort of brought you two different big chunks of information. The first set of slides that we really just breezed through, really only had one slide referring to Washtenaw County's role, and that's in the specific goals and work plan progress around the goals in the 2015 study. The county, as we're not involved in sort of the planning and zoning level work that local municipalities are, our goals tend to be more about advocacy, disposition of publicly owned properties, those kinds of things. But where you'll see, and the handout we just handed out to you is very long, so I don't recommend diving into it right this second, but there are 10 goals, each with at least four to five or more strategies underneath, that we will be working towards with the county in the lead, in partnership with our local units, other partners like WCC, Michigan Works, the schools, because we understand that the county can play this larger convening role, but we need to work in partnership with other entities. So there's sort of both sets of goals here, and the county has a huge role in both.
Yeah, and they need, my understanding, based on their new philosophy and statement, they're trying to actually allocate resources towards this, that goal.
Yeah, and that's actually, it could have been a third part of this presentation, and we didn't include a whole separate section on that, but we're happy to come back and talk more about that. I know, Monica, I think you were able to come to our training in June around racial equity, and we have formally partnered with the City of Ann Arbor and the Government Alliance on Racial Equity to advance the implementation of a racial equity initiative between the City of Ann Arbor and Washtenaw County. That's kicking off sort of formally in 2018. The result of that engagement, we're going to be working with GARE, which is a national organization focused on these issues, working with many governments across the country, is to identify the ways that both the county and the City of Ann Arbor, and our partners that are interested, can come together and identify through data analysis, like the formerly furthering fair housing study that we just shared with you, where are their disparities, where are there inequities in our county, what are the strategies that government can implement to advance equity? One of those has to be looking at how we spend our resources. And so we're really hopeful that we'll be able to implement in our next four-year budget process, at least a piloting of what many communities across the country, working with GARE, are using, which is a budget tool. So where we go through a deeper level of analysis in our decision-making, to understand what these, the impacts of our spending power, our investing power really are across the county, and where we could do better.
Yeah, because they, when you locate or place a lot of people in one area, like that's not giving resources to the area.
Right, and we want choice, right? We want choice for your residents.
I mean, I think you understand what I'm trying to say.
Yeah.
I keep, words are just words, but actions speak much louder than any words that people say. So I keep waiting for, you know, the actionable items from the county in regards to social, economic equity, too.
Absolutely.
Under the HUD formula, poor people are not, they can be discriminated against in housing, correct?
Yeah.
Because it doesn't fit into age, race, sexual orientation, it doesn't fit into any of those. So I think that we really need to look at lifting people up.
Absolutely.
Out of the economic lower, and just get them working. And we've always said, if you can get people working, that will be a solution, but no access to transportation is a big issue.
Right.
And with vehicles, insurance is one of the biggest issues as well. It wasn't listed as, but that's always a big challenge for anyone to, when you own and operate a car. And then I also think that a lot of people are eliminated from renting based on their credit check. So, I mean, if you were to line up, why were they denied access? And, you know, when you have someone come in, they have to have the exact background almost, because I know for a fact people are eliminated on that immediately.
Yeah.
So, and I don't know how you reconcile that, or work with that, you know?
Yeah, well, it's a complicated web, right? We know that part of improving communities is increasing incomes and improving credit, that financial stability is critical. That alone doesn't address a history of segregation and discrimination based on race, or disability, or age, either. So we need both strategies, right?
Right.
Which is why, you know, putting out a set of goals that is so long, frankly, and complicated, as the plan that we've shared with you, there are so many pieces to this, and as Teresa mentioned at the outset, five years is not that long, to work on so many disparate but interconnected parts of our community. And we need to be addressing the income challenges, we need to be addressing employment, and we also need to be addressing the fact that where we see this overlap is in communities of color. So we need to be addressing both and. And I think that we're in a position to be able to do that with such great partners at the local level, who get these issues and know that this is important. We need to bring the county along, we need to bring other parts of the county along, too, and I'm hopeful that we'll be able to do that.
And locating people, yeah. And how do you get that? How do you, because the location of people are here, because it's so-called affordable, but a lot of the county vouchers are, I don't know if that's a, they get a housing something, sometimes are located in Ipsilanti Township, because, you know, it's affordable. So how do you, as a county, address that? When they come out of the homeless shelter, and you want to give them, you know, so much voucher for 90 days, you know, where do they go? And where can they go? Like, I think I know where they go, but where else can they go to help with that, that balance? Because after 90 days, there's no safety net, they're home, you know, it's just, that's really not solving the challenge. But anyways.
Right, I mean, I think we all know that the answer is choice, right? It's opportunity, and it's more housing, more affordable housing.
Yeah, in other areas, in other areas.
Distribute it evenly, yes, across the county, we get you, yes.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair, one comment possibly.
Yeah.
I'm also concerned in regards to, I'm trying to make sure I say this politically correct, attitudes when it comes to certain housing populations, and particularly when it comes to class. I know recently, read a story in regards to attempt to put some senior housing, senior affordable housing, in an area of the county, and there has been pushback in regards to senior affordable housing.
Yeah.
You know, our seniors, we're going to have a big increase of seniors going forward within the next 20 years, unless, I mean, you know, we can't, yeah, I guess my concern is that there also has to be a shift in attitudes, you know, as it relates to the word affordable housing, because, I mean, if it's seniors, why is there a fight for seniors to be able to be able to live somewhere affordable?
I hope that makes sense. It's almost like a comment and a question at the same time.
Absolutely. I know Teresa's going to want to speak to this, and I'll say, we're seeing that opposition to specifically senior affordable housing on all sides of the county. It's not in one location, it is a part of this larger narrative, and I think you're absolutely right. Part of our job in advancing these outcomes is identifying, you know, sort of those core values of fairness and justice, right? We all think that as we age, we should be able to age in place, and age safely, and be integrated into our communities. I don't think anyone here would dispute that as an ideal in Washtenaw County or anywhere, hopefully. And so I think it's about making sure we're clear on what those core values are, and understanding how we can implement them together. Right, we actually put that as one of our goals. There's, it's incorporated in one of them about sort of, it's a little bit of advocacy, it's a little bit of like telling the story of who are we talking about, because there's a lot of, I think, misconceptions about who's in affordable housing, obviously with seniors, but with many. And so I think it's a lot of education, and it's ongoing, right? It's hard, because you have to sort of change people's hearts and minds to understand it. But it's amazing to me how many people have examples of people they know who've had to use it. I love to use our, I think our commissioner would be okay with that, Felicia Braebeck has a great story of the fact that she lived in affordable housing when she first moved to Ann Arbor, and that was how she got on her feet, and now is incredibly successful. And so I think it's some of those stories, and some of the people who are living there now, and sort of making sure we're sharing it, so people break down whatever, whatever story they've built, and sort of have more of the reality of who's living there and who needs it, and why we need to have it throughout the county. And the other piece I'd add that, you know, not specific to seniors, but about that kind of narrative, you know, we spend our lives in roast and HUD speak, and data and regulations, and one of the helpful things that HUD does is, you know, they commission studies on some of their programs from time to time to tell us how effective they are. And we know that the Housing Choice Voucher, formerly Section 8 program, which subsidizes housing, it's the vouchers, we know it is wildly successful. It is a successful tool to stabilize families and allow folks like Felicia to move, and really get a foothold in the community and the economy. We also know that only one in four people that need it and qualify for it get access to it. So even though we have concentration issues, we also have not enough access to affordable housing. And so we have to sort of balance that story as well, that many of our neighbors who need access to that kind of successful support for housing stability don't have access to it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, all right. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
You, too.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, we're actually going to go into a closed session, and the purpose of it is pursuant to 15.268, Section 8, Subparagraph C of the Open Meetings Act for Strategy and Negotiation Sessions Connected with the Negotiating of a Collective Bargaining Agreement and Either Negotiating Party Requested Closed Hearing. So we need a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of discussion, discussing bargaining agreement for the...
Motion to go in a closed session?
Support.
Monica, support Stan.
Eldridge?
Yes.
Ross Williams?
Yes.
Some vote yes, no?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
We are going to executive session at, it looks like it's 5:58.